Fire Subcommittee made up of a couple elected officials and our fire chiefs. We really drilled down on some of the details. And out of that document came several of the things that we wanted to accomplish. We brought those back before you as a council earlier this year. And we were given the blessing to move forward with trying to accomplish those items. So that's what you see incorporated into a work plan tonight. And there's a lot of things that kind of went into how this works. A lot of it has to do with budget timing and possible staff timing and things like that, but it's really to get some feedback on you as to what the overall picture looks like as we're implementing these on a technical and operational level. And this is really where the policy rubber meets the road with the technical and operational part of it. So we have Fire Chief Malwicky is online observing the meeting and then we have Fire Chief Vice Luer here as well. So if we, you know, the goal is really tonight, I want to kind of focus on policy and just direction. We're going to hopefully accomplish the working parts of this, you know, in meetings as we, you know, in between these sections. So as you read through here, you saw that it was kind of broken up by timeline in kind of six-month blocks and what we thought was kind of reasonable to start taking bites out of the elephant. So we saw a few of the completed items and I'll just kind of breeze through this as an outline and then take some feedback from the council. So we, some of the things we completed is that we're now doing the, our fire chiefs are coordinating some regional and collaborative training opportunities. Obviously COVID makes things a little bit odd this last year, but starting to make that standard practice. Our chiefs are involved in our monthly public safety plan review as we're looking at new plans and developments that are potentially coming to the community. And along with our building inspector. We talked about some of the delays in dispatching, which we're still continuing to look at on a case-by-case basis and handle as we can. And then we identified a handful of things that would be really going to need to be ongoing evaluation analysis. There wasn't a, you know, a set time window because so much of these, these next five really relate to what happens in the rest of this timeline and what's, you know, where it's going. So I think it would be a little bit presumptive to say when our call demand is going to mandate some of these things, but it's something we definitely need to have our kind of, our finger on the pulse of. So determining the effectiveness of existing response strategies and recommend facility timing. We're still pretty early in evaluating our call times. You'll recall in the subcommittee, we talked about getting consistent in the way our fire departments record their call times and we went to with a standard of functional response that we developed as far as what is it, when do we have the resources on scene to take action as opposed to, sometimes it was when does the first truck show up on scene? When does dispatch have it registered? And we were really worked to get to the apples to apples. So we're doing that and we're looking at the call volumes and some of that, we'll get feedback on facility timing. But in between there, we might have some interim steps as far as whether it's a medical duty crew or other abilities to respond that can, that will impact when those things need to happen. So for all of this, it's really about right sizing and right timing. Next one is incorporate for facilities and equipment placement within the service area gap as opportunities become available through development city campus planning. We don't know what developments are coming in, so we don't know when those are going to align with what our needs are. So as we're accomplishing the rest of these goals, we're going to identify what those facilities and equipment are. And as those, you know, we have our map from our original study showing where our greatest demand is, where our hotspots are. We're going to keep looking at that and checking the logic. I think if we see things get way out of whack, we would maybe come back and say we might need another study, but I think the data that we're getting so far still seems to support the data that we had a few years ago. Begin planning for the addition of a new fire station to address the service gap area. That's, that's a long project and that's, you know, that's going to begin everything from, you know, forecasting the service demand, what are our development opportunities, but there's also financial planning and campus planning. You know, I think that was talked about even with bridging the gap with how long this remodel can get us here versus when we're going to have to start, what's our long-range campus planning look like for the city? Is this where City Hall always will be? I don't have those answers. Is it, you know, same thing with fire department, police department, are there opportunities to get some efficiencies? And I think that what this speaks to is that we need to have a holistic approach as to how we're planning our facilities throughout the community. And I think this is a, this is probably on the front burner as far as facilities go is where, what is this, we need to bring this fire service stuff into focus. And at that point, we'll see are there opportunities that it makes sense to alleviate other pressures with city administration or police or public works or other, other needs as we face them. And then continue having fire department staff attend police department trainings annually for cross-training, seen size up in response. And we're, we're doing a lot of those things as well, but it's also a continuation. So that's kind of a, could have gone in the last category of this one, but it's still on the radar and we're still continuing to make sure we get our, our cops trained and updated as far as what the fire department wants to, wants and needs to know on their way there, if our guys get there first or, or vice versa. So, and I think we even did that through the pandemic. So a lot of these things kind of cross lanes even just from fire service to medical and, and the training elements of it. So I can stop there if you want to before we move on to phase one, or if you want, I can go through all of it and take some feedback from you guys.
Up to you guys, any questions so far or anything you want to go over? Making sense to me?
Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Matt, as we go through this, for, you know, three of the four people were not here when these were determined as action items. And it's not as if I was like, this is the day. It wasn't consensus that phase one was phase one. It was put together in a list formed with five people's opinions, but as we walk, as he walks through this, I want to recognize that we need to be open to like maybe changing orders and stuff. And as I look at the first one, just as an example, some, there, there may be some controversy about going and doing fire planning for home-based businesses. Or there might be some things that maybe over the course of the last year, from what you've seen, we might move some priorities around. So as we walk through this, I, I think that, and I'd, I'd open and hope to hear if you guys have issues with the timeliness of all this. I think this is a framework, so feel free to comment as to the order and everything. I'm curious as to people's feedback.
Sounds good. Heather, any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
For me, I come from, my wife spent five years on the fire department in Maple Grove when we lived there. She was part of, started the station five. I was on the planning commission, long-range improvement committee. My number one thing is get whatever the chiefs need whenever they need it, no matter what. That's what I believe. Obviously the safety of our firefighters and our police staff are, are number one. But as Matt, you said, a very holistic approach. This is ground zero of developing something good and stuff. And I got tons of questions and stuff, but this is far, far further than what I've known us or what I knew us at. So great job, you guys. I'm, I'm excited to be part of, part of this. Good job.
Thanks. And I, and for your, you know, just, you know, for your catch-up and for those that might be watching at home, you know, really this, this journey starts back with our fire service comprehensive, we called it a comprehensive growth plan. We brought in consultants. We had got state funding to do this and brought that in and we had a subcommittee working on it since that point.
Yeah.
And so there's a couple of documents that really precede this. This is really meant to be, you know, you put them back to back to back and you could, should be able to read the progression and that kind of, when people have questions, I usually start with, you know, to, you know, look through this and then let's start with, let's start with our questions from there. And I think you missed a meeting earlier this year, John, where we did bring the subcommittee report back in front of the new council members for feedback as well. So they, they have.
I didn't miss that one.
Oh, you were here for that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe somebody else missed it.
Okay. There was one missing. I can't remember who it was, but so we, hopefully this is, most of these have been seen at some point or another and we can see how they, how they kind of lay out in a, in something that hopefully makes sense. So the phase 1.0 is, the goal would be to accomplish these from October 21 to March of '22. And these are really, as we go through these, it's really about, this is when we're creating and developing them. The rollout might be April, May, June, it might fall into that next phase. And so that's kind of what I wanted to, I talked about at the beginning of this document is it really is a living document. When we get through phase 1.0, you know, my, my report to the council will be, you know, 1.1 is either completed, here it is, and for your, you know, you know, to check the box, or this is developed into two steps that are in this phase and this phase. So once they get completed, they'll move up into the completed items category and then we'll continue with that living document as to what remains. So it really is going to be evolving, which is why we have version 1.0 on the header so that we don't get, we, we don't get behind. We can always make sure we're pulling up the latest one. So the first one, we talked about creating and distributing a fire department questionnaire with home-based businesses application, just to relay important information about what are the typical number of occupants, are there chemicals or flammable considerations? And that was really a, a form to put together.
I, I like this one. I think it's good to get that information. For the fire chiefs, do you guys feel like, do we have a mechanism to get the information to you? Like when you're going into a, a call, is there a way for you to look this kind of information up? Or how can you make it effective for you so that, it's one thing to collect it, it's something else to make it usable. Any thoughts on that?
I think our vision was to put it with the pre-plans, right? As far as.
Yeah, so we have an active dial line where we can put our pre-plans on so it gets on our, our phone. So when you look up the call, it can give you the address and the details of the call, but then you hit the map and then it gives you a map location. Then if you hit the next layer, it can be set up to show pre-plans. So the hydrants are, the front room connection, hazardous materials, and all that data comes from these surveys. When these surveys go onto the commercial people or home-based, it comes in. It just, you gotta have a layer there for a person to put that into the database. So like for me right now, I have my deputy fire marshal, she does that when she has time. But it's very helpful because, you know, the clock will be at two o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon. But if we go down this road and we get that data, absolutely, I think you gotta use it. Don't just put it away.
Right. Okay. And do you all share the same data set? Does it get parceled out based upon where in the city it is? How does, how does that part of it?
It would be by fire department. So if it's a Loretto's area, when the call comes in, you know, all that data would then go to Loretto's or Rogers or if it's Hanover. But those are some of the things that we can work out. I mean, technology is changing so rapidly every day that I think there's ways of making things, because we do a lot of mutual aid together, which means if I have a house fire, Loretto's coming, so's Hanover, and if you have a house fire, it's the same. So we all need the same data, which is helpful, you know, in a community of this size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huge. It's really huge to have that type of information when we're going to the call with flammable and, you know.
I'm sure.
It's great.
And I think this came out of just, we identified that as a gap. So the commercial ones have a little bit more oversight as they're building and they're, you know, but the home-based businesses where if a person says, I clean pools and we don't know that they have chlorine and other chemicals there, I mean, most of this is going to serve a benefit for the homeowner as well as the responding fire department. So what this means is that in, you know, during this time, we would get together and we would talk about the technical components. And a lot of these are going to have the technical, what does this look like is what we're hoping to bring to you in March of '22 saying, here's what this looks like. It will be, here's the sample of the form which we developed together. If this information is going to be going into Firehouse or CAD or, you know, where, you know, here's how we're going to roll it out or it'll be kept in these two or three places.
Right now, I don't know, Hugh Jeff, I have no idea what Corcoran adds for home business operations. I don't, I don't know. So this would be a very useful task and give us information for heads up. Like Matt was saying, if there's chemicals and things in there or I know I've got a couple places in Corcoran that make ballistic thing and ammunition and then store black powder, those I get because to the, you know, the feds that give that information, put that in there. But if it's just a, you know, it could just be a beauty swamp, it still has occupancy. You still got people coming there, you still got cars parked. So I think this is not going off, this is not going on doing an inspection. This is just getting the data so we know we have all in our community, which we don't know right now.
And some of this is going to be voluntary. It's going to be, it's going to be compliance-based. I mean, so it's going to be, the residents don't know what there's value to us in either. So if we don't ask the question, they can't hope to give us the right information. And that's what a lot of this is really rooted in. A lot of these things are, if we don't ask the questions, people don't know the right answer. And I'll kind of go run through the rest of these and we'll take phase one as a whole as well. But 1.2, you know, just providing a list of the commercial and home-based businesses that we know about in town so that they, they have it, along with the develop an access needs summary. We get a lot of people, you know, who are getting driveway permits and they don't know the physical restrictions of a fire truck. You know, we have a lot of long, nice driveways for a hidden property and the homeowner never knew that that fire, the fire truck is parked out on the road while their house is burning because they couldn't get back there. We just don't have the one-on-one interaction with all those. So that, to me, that looks like an information sheet that's in there. Residents will or will not comply with it, but they'll know, hey, here's why, you know, this has to pass a, you know, a nine-ton roll test or that fire truck's not going to make it in the spring or the fall. And our hope is, is that to really educate our community so they know when they're doing their driveway, the risks they're taking, if there's limited access as far as overhead clearance, as far as turning radiuses, weight restrictions, those kinds of things. And then the last one is probably the heaviest lift of phase one, which is going to be where we're probably going to be spending most time with our fire chiefs, figuring out what does this look like and what's the best way to try and deploy this. Again, this goes back to education. Begin forming a fire education inspection team consisting of one representative, one representative from each fire department conducting business education visits one day a month. And the real, it's just to educate business, business operators on fire code violations so that they can start working towards compliance. We have great businesses that have never been told, you know, here's, this is going to be a problem and here's why. And the goal is down the road, we need to get some better compliance for safety reasons in the community. We're able to set the standard going forward as new businesses come in. But this is really to form that, first of all, to start the conversation, start pointing out, hey, here's this, this, in the future, this will be a problem. I'm not writing you a ticket, but hey, this is, this is what's going to be a problem. You should work towards a solution so that over the next year or a year and a half or, or two years, that business, as they're doing something different, they can say, oh yeah, they said, I can't put that pallet in front of that emergency exit. I'm going to start parking it over here. But it'll allow solutions to present themselves and hopefully we can, you know, build bridges and, because one of the barriers that we found in the past, I think the city briefly started up doing fire code enforcement and they contracted for the service. The person came in and started writing a whole list of violations to businesses that said, you're, you're shutting me down. I can't even function because, you know, I can't even begin to take a bite out of this apple in, in time to be compliant. So our goal here was really to start leading our, our businesses that we have and our business partners down a path of here's how we get there. And, and being transparent, you know, as you get towards the end of it, there is a point where we do get to, you know, enforcement. It's a couple of years down the road, but it's, you know, this way at least they know it's coming.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess other comments or questions on the, on the phase one, or do you have, do you fire chiefs have anything to add to the phase one stuff?
I like the direction a lot. I had a couple of thoughts. I think it's really good that we'll be starting with new applications and we might already know about some. It seems like maybe there could be an opportunity in the newsletter or the website or the Facebook page to try to have a regular cadence like twice a year. Maybe we put in a link to a form and people can be reminded to fill this out if they haven't before, just to give us a bite at all the people who have already established a business, but maybe, you know, wouldn't see this any other way. And the other thought was maybe night to unite could be another way. Have handouts or little tags they could take to give them a link to the form so they could submit it. I like the direction a lot. And I like that we're starting with collaboration and trying to give people visibility before we start making it punitive. I appreciate it.
Education aspect of it's huge, I think. It's, it's good practice in general, but it's also good, I think, to, so you're not just completely, you know, pulling the rug out from underneath people and they're completely surprised by it. And it's hard to, it's hard to know what to comply with when you don't have the education piece there. So I think that's great.
Anything else? Otherwise, did it go on or move on?
Phase two, so we're looking at April 2022 to September of 2022. This was actually in some of the earlier discussions, but evaluate the current fire marshal structure, function and duties and make any appropriate recommendations. So what are we using our fire marshal service for right now? So if you're not aware, what we, we currently contract with our building official is the, is technically the fire marshal. And what their role right now is only looking at new developments as they come in and it's kind of, they cross, cross-reference with the building official. And I think there's some commonalities there that make sense. But there's been a number of, since I started here, there's been a number of gaps that have come up in this process where that would be something a fire marshal would do that and it wasn't done. And it was kind of left with one of these. And I think we've, we've got several workarounds in place. That's kind of how some of our first public safety plan reviews came to be because we wanted to start addressing some of the issues that were coming up in developments before it got time for a building inspection. And they said, oh, you need an eight-ton fire lane around here. And they're saying, well, I had a plan in, you know, six months ago or, you know, it's, it's really, again, we, we've put processes in place, but they're also not the most efficient way to accomplish a number of those things. So it's a matter of really looking at how is it functioning? Is it functioning the best it can be? Is it doing everything we need a fire marshal to do as we're looking at now maybe coordinating the education and inspection visits? As we're looking at things going forward, we're looking at, in 2.2, exploring the timing feasibility of a medical duty crew that's targeted towards peak times. We're starting to coordinate a lot more of the compliance and people aspects of things. And I would see that that's probably going to start taxing us. And it's really about what's a plan to start accomplishing some of the other things that are coming in this.
So do you know who the, do any of you guys know who our city fire marshal is?
No. I would love to find out.
So like, who's our city fire marshal?
Todd Geske.
Oh, okay. He knew?
So he took over for Lauren Conan.
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago. The formal contract outlining that is one sentence in, I think, a resolution in the late 90s that said, he'll also serve as fire marshal.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we've had conversations about with Todd saying, okay, what does this look like if we're going to start, you know, here's our plan, here's what we're working on, what does it look like if we're to, you know, start rolling out a more traditional function of a, of a fire marshal? And they said, well, it's not something they really typically do beyond the scale that they're currently doing it.
Uh-huh.
And then it's, you know, it falls under the contractual hours that, you know, we have for our building official, so.
So how, sorry, may I ask a question? How do cities of our size usually staff that or deal with that need if it's not the building official?
There's a, there's a whole host of ways. I think some of them, you know, some cities have blinders on, some of them partner and you'll see a few cities that come together on it. Some of them stat, you know, it's a function out of the, they have a person within the fire department that serves in that capacity. And I don't know if you guys want to speak to any other things that you've seen about how smaller cities accomplish the fire marshal role?
It's, it's just like Matt said, it's, you know, as your city grows, your, your demand for fire code evaluations and fire marshal activities. So, so for like Rogers, I became full-time almost 20 years ago and that was my role. I am the fire marshal for Rogers, but then it gets overwhelming and then so we go to the next level. So I hired a deputy fire marshal, Chris, who she is full-time. And then last year, we hired a full-time fire administrative assistant who also slashed the firefighter. So as your calls go up and your role starts and today, Chris has a seminar, a guy called, or a woman called up, she was all upset, blocked exits on a building in Rogers. So, you know, I, I had it out there and yeah, it was not good. So we give correction orders. But as your commercial continues to grow, it's just not the initial, it's what's happened afterwards. And then the fire panels go bad and then the sensors go bad. All that has, that all takes time to do. It's like I told Matt and Jeff, it's when Chris goes out for inspection, that's the easy part. It's the follow-up. I mean, it's, they don't, most people don't understand what the fire code is and we have to quote sections and we gotta walk them through there to make sure they understand. So it's not, it's a, it's a partnership. And that's how I've grown in my, my cities, the fire marshal code enforcement inspections is a partnership with commercial industrial businesses. But you're going to start, I think we're doing the right thing, talking about and looking at because as you keep going with commercial industrial stuff, this, it's, there's going to be stuff that comes around and say, I need someone to respond. For like what I did today, you got a building that there's, you know, junk all over in front of these exits and the people can't get out. You can't ignore it. I guess that's a good point.
Yeah, it's, it's usually somebody that's qualified for the technical stuff, but as they, you add on so many other duties, you know, as you, you said, that was your first, you know, the first, that's usually what typically cities will usually start with, you know, as in Rogers 20 years ago, that this is the, it's, it's the easy statutory function, but then you're doing so much more than that as far as coordinating and bringing so many things together on it. And that's, you know, it's also, I think, important to look at the timing of that with our education and inspection visits because eventually if we get to an enforcement role, you know, it's going to be from a, you know, a fire marshal's perspective that we're, I would anticipate that we're doing the enforcement, which is, you know, as we get farther down this plan. And I think starting out early with that in mind as far as being a part of education and coordination is going to be a good part of helping steer the ship and making sure that we have the continuity and the vision all together. And that, that's the biggest thing I'd say we all, we all can say we struggle with in our, in Corcoran with our, we have three great fire departments, but they're all just a little bit different. They all function differently. And to get the same answer throughout the community is one thing that we all have to, okay, huddle up, you know, here, look at the plans, here's what we got here. And with you, you have to look at it with the same set of eyes. Otherwise, you know, things get taken or, or stated differently, which is through no fault of anybody's. It's just a matter of trying to get consistent, consistent movement and consistent feedback for our community. Was that anything else on that one?
That was it. Thank you. Great answer.
So then it went into again, like I talked about, exploring timing and feasibility of what a medical duty crew targeted at peak times looks like and making any appropriate staffing recommendations. Starting the standard that new multifamily complexes will be inspected for compliance every two years. So we're talking about, you know, apartment buildings, things like that, so that when they come in, they, they just don't know any different. We do a two-year inspection cycle and, and check those things. And that was one of the things that we're, we're able to, to take from the knowledge and history that, you know, when Brad has seen a number of them go into his community over the last 20 years, where the, where are the snags and what have we, you know, what have we seen? So again, analyze existing response times, incorporate response times standards into contracts. So this is really, the next three, four are really, the next four items are really contractual. And that's why they're in here for the timing so that we can talk about what that language looks like in our 2023 fire contract. And so all of these, we, we have to kind of approach with an open mind that we don't know what this answer looks like with the fire chief. What is an achievable way to do this and what does a language look like? And, you know, talking to our attorneys, what do we draft it like to accomplish? So I don't have a lot of the details, other than what we wanted to accomplish from those subcommittees was putting in the response time standards into the existing contracts, which was a recommendation out of our first study. They said you can't analyze success or failure if you're not putting what success or failure looks like. And that's really what, why we started measuring the functional response times to make sure that we're kind of leveling the playing field and analyzing it in the same way. Next one was a provision in the fire department service contract to require each department to host at least one public education event in their, in their district per year besides night to unite, just to get out in the community. And sometimes, you know, we're, we're already doing a lot of those things, you know, Rogers was out doing, and Loretto, you know, they've been doing smoke detector giveaways or things like that where they're just, they're just interacting in the community in a non-call-for-service related fashion, but we're kind of outlining that requirement. Similar to the one up above it is incorporate a medical functional response time standard of 15 minutes measured at the 80th percentile into existing fire service contracts. We got those numbers from analyzing the data and what we felt was appropriate. So again, this is incorporating the standard at 15 and again, incorporate rural and suburban And again, incorporate rural and suburban fire functional response times at 14 in the next one. Those are contractual standards. Now what the question is, well, what happens if they don't meet it? Well, let's talk about it. What does, you know, is it, is it a matter of if it doesn't happen, you know, we're always going to, there's always has to be accommodations for outliers, but if we start seeing that number bump up or repeatedly not meeting it, it's gonna be feedback from the fire departments. What does it take to accomplish this? And they're gonna say either I need staffing or equipment or it's geography. And all of those things will, you know, inevitably come with a, a price tag or a contract adjustment. So that's the reason for the timing of this one in the middle of 22 is to start wrapping our heads about around what does this look like and what does this mean for a 2023 fire contract?
Matt. Is the, is the pay model for the three fire departments the same?
They're, they're all a little bit different, but they're all very similar. It's a proportion of market value and calls for service.
No, I mean, the volunteer, cause you're full time. And you have full time staff, but you're not full time. And, and, um, Anover is not full time either.
But we're all supported by a paid on call model. So all the members for Jeff and.
So everybody's paid on call.
In your study that, that we show response times, that's not Jeff's or my time. That's a group in there.
Yeah, yeah, function.
Right.
So, so when we, when we think about time and if we squeeze, if we say, well, we need response times at some better percentile, you'd have to have people at the station, which costs money. And like all of these things, like the, there's a, this, we'd like this, it would cost this to do it. So there's gonna be conversations among us five about if we add this as something to the fire plan, something else has to. We can't just say, you gotta be here five minutes early, damn it. It doesn't work that way. So we're gonna, we might have to change things. So with each of these standards and the things, in the, in that meeting, like, I know when I went into it, I'm like, no, we gotta, we gotta exceed all the standards. But then you start to look at geography, um, paid volunteer modeling, um, all of that. It's not, it's not as easy
Right.
as you would think. Like you just can't say be fast.
Right.
There's structural issues that we run into. And so the, uh, it's important to consider these in the context of, we're trying to strike a balance. Or if we want to improve this, we might have to do something different. Pay for something different.
That's, yeah, exactly. Well stated, John. Cause that's kind of, as John pointed out, some of these other ones earlier are really mitigation measures to accomplish some of those things. When you're looking at the targeted medical duty crews, it was doing the projections on the type of facilities and housing that we're bringing in and where our demand's gonna come from. And if we know what our, what our response, what our standards and goals are, those are going to be maybe mitigating factors that, you know, we can, we can control those costs in different ways. And we can also control the city's investments in different ways through contracts or, you know, equipment or people or, you know, there, it's always, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces, but we're really trying to bring into focus what our goals are. And I think that, you know, where we got to these was with our measurement of what we were doing. And when we analyzed our service, I think a lot of people were really happy with our service. These numbers that were, that were recommended out of our 2019 subcommittee were pretty much almost spot on with where we were at at the time. And I don't think we've deviated a lot from that, but we're, you know, we saw our calls dip a lot last year and they're up now this year, but we're, we're keeping an eye on what that means and, and how that translates. So.
Councilor Nichols, do you have a question? You look.
I, yeah, it, I was just checking that. And it appeared to me like we're already meeting the goals, at least in the 2019 data set. So I guess that's better than not meeting your goals, right?
That's where we said if we're going to put something in the contract, we, we're happy with our fire service in 2019. And I think that that was really a recognition of we're happy with that. How do we know when we're not happy anymore? And we looked at what's, you know, what are the NFPA standards versus what are we getting and what are, what should our goals be? What are the differences between rural and suburban response? And that's what our, we hope to design our data to answer.
And to, to your point, Matt, with new developments coming in that are going to be more senior oriented, memory care, that sort of thing. A lot of that's concentrated in the eastern side. If I remember the map correctly from six months ago, that was where we tend to be slower in some areas. So do we expect that the gravitational pull of people moving into those areas and needing services, that gonna tend to extend our service times? Or do we feel like we have resources in the right places, that it should stay relatively steady?
Well, I think that's why it's an ongoing analysis item. But I think what we're seeing even this last year is actually what's driving our increase in calls for service this year isn't the, the development on the eastern edge. It's actually rural calls have gone up this year, but I think it's safe to say that our, our demand for medical is gonna come from the eastern side of the city, which our study back in, was it 2017 or 18 also showed that that's where the greatest demand for services was, you know, per, per capita or per, uh, you know, citywide. And so I think that what that speaks to is if we're going to invest in facilities or, um, duty crews or equipment, it's telling us where to place them. And what we found as we dug deeper in a lot of the data from response times to the geographical mapping, all of those things placed those resources or the need for those resources became pretty clear that it was in kind of east central right now is, is where the first place would go. And that's still gonna help. If you have something like a duty crew or a station, that's still gonna help your calls going west as well. But when we look at demand and stuff, it, all of those kind of stars seem to align the more we looked at the data, I think.
Well, the, the data looking backwards supports the notion that east centered, the east central part of Corcoran is the biggest user of medical call, or biggest provider of medical calls or whatever you wanna say. Which is part of it, or a big portion of that is the trailer park. It's the most dense area. And, but now we're adding senior housing, the, all the way from Rogers down to, uh, not quite to your neighborhood, but, uh, down to Ravinia. So it's logical then, even in hindsight, it's gonna match, but there's gonna be a different subset of people. And, and so for me, that two point two is really critical because we don't wanna have to fix a problem that exists. We wanna be ahead of a problem that we can see obviously is going to exist. And so, um, that, and, but that also is probably the most difficult thing of phase two, in my opinion, is how do we do that? How do we structure it? Who do we use? What do we use? All that different stuff. It's a challenge. And so for action items, we have an action item on here of having a medical response time of 15 minutes into existing fire service contracts. But that's not, like, we don't, we can, we can just say, Matt, can you do that? And our work is done, so to speak, kind of, but, uh, and work within it. But we actually have a ton of work to do on two point two to figure out how that gets, how that gets worked into our existing public safety mix. And it's a critical piece of it. In my opinion.
Yeah, that's gonna be a heavy lift in phase two for sure, figuring out what the options are for that and kind of presenting them to councilors too. Here's, here's what this can look like. And that's gonna take a lot of technical work on our end to figure out how can we accomplish this. And yeah, it's, that's quite a bit. And as you, you know, when you get to two point eight and two point nine, where those differentiate from, uh, two point five, six and seven is that this is, this is a council initiative adopting a goal of, you know, the medical functional response time of 12 minutes. So as you saw earlier, they're adopting the standard and also then adopting the response time goals. And the same thing with two point nine, which is adopting the goal, which is really setting us, okay, this, we're adopting the standards, which is this, our, our service can't get any, you know, worse than this. But what we're committing to by, by if the council adopts those goals is saying, we believe we should work towards this. And those are rooted in NFPA standards, which, um, we gleaned from the, um, you know, when we took our mission, vision and, or mission, mission, vision and values. Um, and a lot of those, you know, what's our philosophy on it was at or above industry standards. And it's not saying every city has to adopt NFPA, but as we talked about, what does it look like if we're gonna set our goals for improvement, for incremental improvement? It says our baseline is what's in the contract, but we want to work towards getting to a, you know, a 12 minute response time. And, and I think that, again, those adoptions would come in front of the council and, um, to, you know, if we wanna look at them individually or have concerns or feedback, but I think it's important not only to set your standard, but also if we're going to, if we're gonna start having a functional, you know, a, a functional fire service becoming, evolving more than what it is, we're not gonna get anywhere if we don't start setting some, I, I wouldn't even call them stretch goals, just, you know, reasonable goals for where we want to be. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just real quick to that too, to improve response time, there is going to be an investment related to volunteers, equipment. You've already said location, location, location. What are we doing with our current population in Corcoran to look for volunteers within us? Is there the possibility of having responses from people that live in Corcoran to meet the Rockford Fire Department, all of those things? I'm probably digging too deep. Again, I, I've seen it and experienced it all and such. But to, to say I wanna improve a goal, there is a cost involved in that. The thing I wanna stay away from is the absolute most cost involved in that's full time fire department and such. I'm, how many, how many full times are in Rogers?
I've got three full time and then we can have 41 paid on call.
Okay.
But I have not been at 41 for about five years.
So you're starving for people.
It's semi maple roll with semi over.
Yep.
Jeff's been pretty fortunate with what he's been able to hire. But as your community grows and kind of turns into a veteran community, when I moved to Rogers, it was a farm community thirty years ago.
Right.
Lived in town, worked in town, you joined every organization. But now it's, it's all, it's different. So we're, we just hired three, um, but I'm still gonna be down two.
And it's a big deal to hire them. They've gotta go through.
Yeah, it's, it's a physical utility test and then you guys send it to us.
Fighter fighter one, firefighter two, the psych evaluation, everything else. And, yep, nothing's changed.
For two years. So really I, my paid on call firefighter really isn't trained until a hundred percent. Jeff, I feel comfortable. You're about two and a half to three years out. We're doing the same training as Minneapolis and St. Paul. It's all NFPA requirements, sending in the ones or the four and anything like that. But, you know, on the, on the paid on call model, you know, you know, everyone carries a pager. And if it's two o'clock in the morning, you're getting on a bag, you jump in your car, you drive to the station, you put your turnout gear on, you jump in the truck, you take it off, you get on the scene. And when I look at these numbers, cause I'm in the same X rate, do the same study with the city of I C because they don't have a fire department, we're doing the same thing. And it's all about response time. These are good numbers, but they're gonna change. And that's why I think Matt's did a good job by monitoring this.
Yep.
Growth also brings in signalants and roundabouts and traffic and all that.
Slows things down.
Restrictions on getting people to the fire station. So for our standard, you have to live within eight minutes. If you're nine minutes or eight minutes and 50 seconds, you can't fly. So, but now even eight minutes is getting harder for some of the firefighters in here because there are so many obstacles to get to the fire station compared to 30 years ago.
Yep.
Well, you're, you're, I was gonna say, you're, you're asking the question that, that we're really looking at.
Yep, I just, I wanted to get that out there. You guys are already on it. I've seen it and have been part of it and experienced it again with my wife, uh, wanting to do something after my son said, mom, become a firefighter. And I'm like, I gotta support that. And I did. And, uh, I, I did it from the administrative side, supporting and stuff, but I just, there's gonna come to a point where we're going to need to invest the money that we're gonna have extremely wisely to do things right, but.
Well, and to your point, we, you know, there, we're not gonna find a whole bunch of volunteers to come do something like this that aren't already serving in Rogers or Loretto. I mean, we'd be competing for the same candidate pool. And our goal, you know, you're kind of shooting yourself in the foot. It wouldn't do any good to say, here, we're gonna, you're gonna come do this duty crew, but you aren't gonna do this or that.
Right.
You know, getting volunteers, the, the volunteer fire model, and it, it may be a more bold way to say it, but it's in the process of failing. I mean, people's ability
Exactly.
As a volunteer
Yep.
is slim. And this is, you know, to expect that we're going to have people coming out of the woodwork to do it.
We just had about like thousand or two thousand people move in. So I don't know if all those people, like, I don't know it's true that they'd already be there. Like the, we, we can do a better job, especially since two of the people on council should probably be door knocking and in their neighborhood to get people to join that.
So Jeff and I, we've done a lot of recruitment. Uh, we did a great newsletter here last spring in our newsletter. We've got one of my firefighters, your family, showing family life, work life, firefighter life. Um, and I'll just talk for me, being doing this as long as I have is this, right now, the model is hard to keep it full because it's a time thing. The, the people.
Huge commitment.
It's a huge commitment.
Huge commitment.
It's not like joining the, uh, the Lions Club or the nights to unite. Uh, you, you have to make percentages. You gotta make so many train hours per night. If you don't make those requirements, you get a strike. If you get so many of them, you get disciplined and dismissed. You know, and we're still, um, we're not, I don't believe we're paying a paid on call, but they shouldn't be getting paid on actually order a council for more of a pay, but it's, it's not all about the pay. It's, it's about time.
You, you gotta wanna do it.
You gotta wanna do it and you gotta, you gotta have the support from your family.
Yep. My wife got on it and the furthest we went away from station five is Applebee's for dinner. And when she got called, it was her and the three other people that were with us. They went to the fire station, the rest of us finished our dinner and went home together and whatever vehicles were left. It, it's a commitment. It, it's a way of life. And, uh, it's something that you all I know are very, very proud of. The guys that, the guys and gals that are working for you are also very, very proud of, and I appreciate it a lot. But it just, we can talk goals, we can talk times, but once you get to a point, there's an investment and it's gotta be a wise investment. So.
I think council, you brought up a great point though. Uh, you know, you talk about facility, you talk about trucks, but you can put a facility up, but to get a firefighter to a point where you're comfortable, you're looking at five to seven years.
Yeah.
So if you're thinking, you know, something, as you're planning right now, which is great and stuff, it's gonna take five to seven years to get that person or those firefighters up. So I think you brought up a great point is, you know, we could, they got, if we're looking to do this kind of work, we need to somehow start getting those people hired.
Oh, no.
Now, for if we're looking for, if you're looking at a facility in five to seven, you know, this, five to seven years, you can put up a facility, but then you're looking at like a duty crew thing or whatever, but it takes that long of time to get people that are, you know,
Fully trained.
Fully trained and, and comfortable with, you know, protecting your community. So you're right, you're, you're right on that.
And my wife works for the medical fire department. So she,
There you go.
She sees that they've got 10 full time, they're about 115.
They're up to 10 now and okay.
Well, that's, that's all their inspectors. They don't all respond to calls though.
Right.
They got responsibilities to do, but they still, they have a robust, is still tapping on the 115 paid on call firefighters for five stations at about a thousand calls a year, plus all the training.
14, 14 years ago.
Do all this training and then you want me to stay home on weekends. So I gotta make my percentages. So I can't go to the cabin. That's why I'm here for my guys right now is, as I come to the end of each quarter, it's like, you know, my percentage is only 25% per quarter. But still, when you're working and you're working in the cities and all those daytime calls I have, I mean, you're not getting them. And then they come home on weekends, want to go up north and stuff. So it, it, it's, Jeff is right. It's, it's, the building is the building, but the thing that we're gonna walk through as a group is look at all this stuff with the great experience that we all have that we're dealing with right now and see what's the best model for the city of Corcoran for today and maybe for the future. But.
So it's a huge commitment and it just, it, people don't realize. So they, they trust what you're doing and, and everything else. And you got a supporter and I don't know if my wife will come out of retirement. She, uh, she was told she had to remove herself after we moved. She was still making second or third spot on the first truck from where we are. And she was still asked to resign. So it's, it's hard. And, uh, appreciate everything you guys are doing, but you guys know what you need and what you, what you got. Make sure you're asking.
Anything else in phase two? Uh, phase three, the four items on here, and again, remember this is a living document. Phase three is gonna have a lot more in it. Once we get through phase, you know, the items in phase one and two. So there's, you know, what looks slim going forward are probably gonna start populating as there's carryover from the previous items. So what's in phase three right now is dedicating a page on the city's website to fire information. Consider starting a Facebook page representing the Corcoran Fire Service with regular contributions from all three departments, including a section in the newsletter. And the biggest lift, um, staff time wise in three point four is incorporating fire code compliance into future rental ordinance, which there's no rental ordinance yet either, which is gonna be, it's gonna take a lot of work and stuff to get there. Uh, most of the other stuff, the reason it landed in this timeframe was related to having a communications person to manage and update those items. But certainly open to feedback from the council on it.
Yeah, you and I talked about this little, uh, earlier, but, uh, and, and what you said about the, having the communications person, I think does make sense. I'd, I'd like to maybe see, you know, something with the website, even if it's just really bare bones and something we build up over time. I think we could do that sooner and it makes people more aware that it exists. And then when it actually is really full of a lot of information, they'll know exactly where to go to. Um, it seems like a relatively easy thing to, to bump up. And, um, maybe similar type thing with, uh, the newsletter and sort of with the Facebook page, although I think those aren't as easy to push all the way up, um, as maybe the website is, but just kind of some food for thought on the timing of that.
Matt, do we have a, do we even have a rental, rental ordinance in Corcoran? So before we put a co fire code compliance into a rental ordinance, we'd have to have a rental ordinance first, right?
Yes, it is being talked about. Yes, it is being talked about, and-
Yeah.
It's, it's being talked about, and that's kinda one of the reasons why this fell to twenty-two, twenty-three, is that we'll have a clearer picture. We might get to this section and say, "We don't have a rental ordinance yet, but we've done the work of what we think should be in there for the fire part of it, and this is how we would want it to be folded in." 'Cause we wanna be able to, what we don't wanna do is come to the rental ordinance after it's already done and say, "Okay, we wanna, we wanna break it apart and add, add a bunch of stuff." We kinda wanna, want it to mesh during the timing, so if all of a sudden, from, from our planner and other perspectives, we're saying, "We're doing the rental ordinance in three months," then we need to start getting our stuff together, and that would, that would move it up. But I think it was kinda put in there as a placeholder, and as a, by now, you should, we should start getting an idea of what belongs in there. But, yeah, I think you're spot on with, it's gotta have to be a little bit flexible.
Yeah. It's also, like, for us, I kinda said it because we actually, you should know that we don't have a rental ordinance.
Other questions on Phase Three items? Yeah, and I'll look at trying to fold up the, you know, some of those communications, and maybe see if we can do them a little bit sooner. And I'll work with Jessica, her staff is the one that does the website stuff, and, and really does the hands-on with the newsletter stuff as well, to see what, what we can accomplish sooner.
That'd be great.
Phase Four, this is April twenty-three to September of twenty-three, is utilize the fire education and inspection team visits for the fire departments to develop pre-response plans to coordinate access and response for community businesses. This is, um, this is a lot of work, I mean, those are, that's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot that goes into that. The hope would be, you know, obviously, we, we're gonna need some, some feedback from our fire departments, they're gonna be a huge part of it, hopefully, you know, depending on how all the other staffing stuff plays out, whether or not there's a fire marshal person on the horizon, or an education and inspection team, or, you know, hopefully, they'll have been gathering data and kinda know what they're looking at going into it, so we won't be going into it blind, but there's, I think there's some work that goes into it. I don't know if you guys wanna speak to those any, anymore, but-
No, it's, uh, fire education and inspection is a big, big, um, job, figure this out for, for the city, to where you're at today compared to where you're gonna be going to, and, and like I said earlier, as these buildings get older, they need to be inspected, and that type of thing, like, it's like John was saying, there is a cost to any type of level, and we increase the service, and I think the group is gonna have, this is gonna be, this one is gonna be interesting for all of us to work out and bring back something for you guys to look at, and see if this is the right time to implement something in city of Corcoran.
And as you talked, we are doing some pre-plans in some of the businesses in our fire district. Saying, you know, every, every other month, a couple people just going out and doing a pre-plan, picking a business, and, you know, it's basic pre-plan, it's, you know, like Brad said, when you click Iraq and nine-one, it's like, where's the gas meter, where's the fire, where's the sprinkler building, or sprinkler room, those kinda things. So we're doing a little bit already, but it's, it's, it's difficult to do on a regular basis with paid-on-call people, I mean, but we just feel there's some buildings that we, we want our, indeed, in our fire district to have some information, you know, who the, who the owner is, who the call worker, who you call, and whatever, so we're doing it, it's like the two of the guys, but like, there's a lot more to that.
Yeah, and, and along with that, for heavy consideration is the Minnesota Building Code thirteen oh six. And I think you guys, you said it was, you know, there was a lot of discussion in Rogers as well, and that was under consideration. You'll notice it's, you know, it's written as consider adopting the building code. There's gonna be a lot of feedback, that's a very, gonna be a very political topic for the council, and it's gonna probably involve feedback from builders, and, um, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we adopted the thirteen oh six back in two thousand and two, which for the most part gets all my buildings sprinkled. Even if the fire code and the building code say you gotta be over, like, a school is twelve thousand square feet, because it's an E, it's an automatic. So any buildings coming to Rogers right now are fully sprinkled, which helps our ice lowering, 'cause it helps our fire flows. That way, we're not at two thousand GPM, we're dropping down to five hundred. But it's also if they touch the building, they put an addition on it, um, they have to sprinkle the building. So since I'm in chief, we've got a lot of existing buildings sprinkled, which is a benefit to my firefighters and keeping the businesses open. So if you're looking at, you know, stats, if a building has severe fire damage, sixty percent of them don't reopen, they become abandoned buildings, and they become ice or in the community. We're, uh, one sprinkler head, you know, two sprinklers contain the fire, we get there, do our job, mop up, and that business is back up, working, employees are back, working that later that afternoon and next morning. The, the thing about thirteen oh six is not so much new construction, 'cause in the twenty-first century, everyone's, they just come in, we're working on sprinkler. It's the existing ones, it's the buildings that have been here fifty years, and I won't say I'd have, our council chamber full of business people, you know, but our council has supported me in saying, if, if it's two thousand and two, we're gonna keep thirteen oh six as long as we can keep it, and it's, and it's working right now, so. But it's, it's, existing buildings, you're gonna get some, you're gonna get some feedback.
Yeah.
But on that, I gotta say, also, you gotta have water service for them, and, and you, you just can't have a building way out of the building nowhere. It's even a sprinkler building, thirteen oh six has a, has a subpar, where if you don't have water service, then-
It's gotta be, gotta be a supply.
Yeah, you just, but you gotta, you gotta keep a sixty-foot radius, clear zone around it, but there's no reveal, but, you know, you can't make a business order, put in three miles of eight-inch water to get your building, that would be feasible, so.
But I would say we've also done a good job of helping our businesses that have come in within the last four or five years to plan ahead for it, if they were in an area that potentially would have it, and saying, "You're gonna have water service, we recommend while you have, while you're excavating, put in your pipes, put in your hydrants, even if they're dry, that when this happens, you'll, it will save you a lot of money." And we've been able to provide that advice several times.
That truck center up on Brockton, crushing the KOA, that's the same thing, there's no water up there right now. But because they are over a certain square footage, they still have to sprinkler it, so they gotta, they gotta put a tank in there. And, but, working with them and your planning department, we were able to get them to put hydrants in and just keep them dry, and stub them out. So two years from now, we know water's gonna be up Brockton, uh, then they can just hook them up, and now we got hydrants out there instead of running with our big tankers. So I think that's some big benefits that happen with our monthly meetings when we all sit around talking about stuff like this.
How big a tank for fire suppression are they gonna have? Your thoughts, is that a five-hundred, thousand gallon?
That's, that's on Metro West.
That's what we're talking, okay.
I review for Rogers, I've got tanks for Rogers, and you calculate it out by the distance, the time, and a couple other things, like that first truck hooked up to the fire department connection. But I have not, I don't, I don't know what their tank's gonna be in that building. But they're gonna put a tank in there, and then once they get water and silver, they're gonna pull that out, but their building will be fully sprinkled, which is a benefit.
Then no business should ever regret it. I have a friend that was business in Maple Grove, absolutely refused sprinkler system. The city insisted, and a few months after he opened, had some sign work done. That night, the fire started, and the roof sprinklers on, quick response from the fire department. He was back up and running his business in two weeks. If he wasn't up, it would've been a complete loss, so it just, it's a big deal.
You're certain the city contractors and developers just do it.
Yep.
I had a meeting on Tuesday with a hundred and fifty unit, telling them, "Brooke, come in Rogers," so six flexes and eight flexes. I asked a question, 'cause some of them haven't been, you know, sprinklers is working for, for a thirteen D system, or sprinkler and everything. We're not, we're not gonna have our, our buildings that's sprinkled.
Somebody's gonna resist, though.
Yeah, oh, oh, I, I've seen a lot of them.
And it's-
You gotta educate them, you just don't, you know, turn the switch. Education is so important when you're talking about life safety issues.
Fires double-
Yeah, I, I consider-
How fast?
Pretty quick, but is it whatever you-
I'm trying to remember the time.
One second, it's like it doubles in size every ten seconds, and the whiskey's going wrong. And then you have some fuel in there, and some commodities, that, uh-
There's all kinds of additives and variabilities and stuff. Thanks for entertaining my-
Yeah, and the business park place storage, with that being part of that part section, they do have tanks in there, and they have a sprinkler system, I think it's two twenty thousand gallon tanks they had in the sprinkler room. You, you know, that's just like, you said, we talk about this stuff monthly, and, yeah, I mean, it helps you sleep easier at night, because I've been in a couple winter fires in park place, and-
I've got, I've got a huge empty silo that I love fire suppression in, to make sure my barn doesn't burn down if it ever starts, but it's a whole other thing, so.
Anything else on Phase Four? Five, six, and seven are really placeholders, I'm guessing they're probably going to fill up as, from previous phases, but really getting us to Phase Eight, and felt it was important getting this on paper, but after three years of education and inspection visits, the fire education inspection team should begin commercial fire code enforcement. The goal of the visits is compliance, and none of these should come as a surprise to the business operators, that's, they should've had three years of, and it might've only been once per year, but it's, this shouldn't be the first time they hear about something major. And it's just, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be incumbent on us those first few years that they take, take those things to heart when we say, "You know what, I realize this is a big deal." But in a few years, it's really gonna matter, and, and it's not gonna make it any easier, but at some point, we have to start, I think we have to start getting, getting serious about enforcing some of the stuff in the community, because the rest of the community relies on, you know, that, that we're, we're making the other businesses kinda keep their stuff in line before it starts impacting other people. Not just in the ability to provide service, but also just the safety for surrounding businesses and, and community members, and the safety of our firefighters and first responders.
Huge, thank you. Councilmember Bottom of Schultz for the forethinking on getting this going a few years ago. Huge, huge, huge.
Brian DeJuski had a lot to do with it.
Thank you, Brian, probably, yes, but previous council, mayor, great job. I want to go on the record for that.
It's gonna be three meetings. Ended up about eighteen.
Yep, it is, and it, it's still going on. It, it better, you can, you can never over-prepare, so.
It's just three meetings anyway, I didn't know when they said that, but that's-
Ain't gonna happen.
That's, that was to get Brian and I admitted.
Well, and another thing that I want, I want all, everybody here to recognize is the importance of the communication and transparency on these things. Um, you know, even just talking about, you know, after this fire meeting, I'll probably hear three different places in the community about things that were said that wasn't said, and I, and I really want you, all of us to be on the same page, so that if our community has questions, 'cause this is a big deal, and it's personal, and there's a lot of pride in fire departments and community, and, and where we're going and how we're getting there. And I want our community to know that we've been thoughtful about it, and that we all hopefully have the same information. You see communities struggle mightily when there's not, when they're, when people aren't on the same page with where they're going, and they don't put the time in to develop the vision, and I think we can all say, as, as painful as the year worth of meetings were, it really, it really solidified and brought things together, and, and everything that we're doing has a why attached to it that's rooted in a philosophy that, that we've adopted. And I think that's really important, so. Any overall feedback from the council as we finish up?
Good work, keep going.
Yeah, definitely, appreciate all that.
Appreciate all you do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say, I covered five areas of five cities, and you guys are way, way ahead of the other four cities, because there is, like Matt said, just ignore some stuff, but- So I, I appreciate you guys, Matt, and all of you. Has the trade come down with Jacks?
If, if I can step-
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe two or three steps out. The replacement of equipment, trucks, those kinda things, Rogers has a plan, how many years to change out engines, change out stuff? Is it a four-year, five, seven, eight years? How long do you keep equipment?
First-line engines-
And I'm going someplace with this, so.
Yeah, first-line engines are, are twenty-two years of replacement.
Okay.
Engine, I mean, their cost, and right now, I just placed it where it last referred here in January, replaced in nineteen ninety-six.
Got it.
The price tag is about eight hundred thousand, um, that price is in line now. Um, my ladder truck is up for replacement in twenty thirty-five, I will not be here when that truck goes up to the council, 'cause it's gonna be about one point five million dollar truck. Uh, but, um, you know, anytime you take a multi-cross of fire department, you put on a piece of equipment, uh, the price goes up. So we run our ladder truck at about, um, thirty years, our tanker is about twenty-five years.
How, how worn out are those vehicles? Are, is that something that could step into a, a secondary building in our direction and improve response times? Have you guys been thinking about that and such? I know where I come from, it was-
Yeah, yeah.
They were sold, they were regularly exchanged out and such, not quite as long as what you're dealing with, but, uh-
So then, it's, it's like for, like, I'm not talking to Jessica, but for like us, you don't see a lot of miles on the trucks, uh, but you see a lot of hours, so-
Running inside, yeah, sitting in idling.
Fire for four hours, six hours compared to, and we're, we're only going three miles to a fire, and then we're coming back, you know, and doing that type thing. Uh, West Metro Fire, which is New Hope and Crystal, they're, they're at about fifteen years for their vehicles. So, um, but in our fire contracts, we're just doing, you know, that, we're paying for everything on the higher side of it, and, and, but you gotta keep good equipment, because you, you're trusting the pumps and those fire parts are inside that house. So you gotta draw a line there and say, twenty-two years, and this one I'm replacing, um, it's a nineteen ninety-six custom, um, you know, I'm probably only gonna get maybe thirty thousand for it, and it's probably, you know, a Maple Grove Clement Fire or Royal Fire went by in this truck. I mean, they, this would go into someplace up in, you know, in the-
Small towns are, are the ones that are purchased, and it-
And it, it, it's still, it meets all the NFPA, we test all the holes, the ladders, the pumps, like Jeff does, um-
And that's where I'm going, is, is that something that can get us into and, and hold us over, kinda like we remodeled City Hall and stuff? If it's some, the, the pumps have been replaced, they've been managed, they've been serviced, all of those things? If, if that's-
I need to say, the goal I had to be part of the study, as we go down that path, and all of a sudden, you say you're gonna have to build a fire station in ten years, what, what does Jeff have, what does Dave have, what does Brad have that we can look at, working out some prices, something to take that fleet just for a temporary, just to get you through the first couple?
Just to get going, that's, that's all I'm imagining, so, thank you for, thank you for entertaining that.
There is some opportunity with that, that we could, you know, 'cause like Brad said, everything's certified, and so, we, and, and moving equipment around helps the response time, I'd be-
I've seen small towns get extremely excited buying equipment from some of our local areas, and they cherish those pieces of equipment something fierce, and they work real well, so, it's something that'll take about-
Twelve pieces of apparatus between two stations, some are pickups, some are ATV's, some are fire trucks, some are heavy rescues, just like Jeff does.
Yep, thank you, guys.
That's an opportunity as you get closer, 'cause that's the kinda discussion I have with the city of I C, where I'd say, "Look at the same, if, if we build this, can, can we get some help?" 'Cause eight hundred thousand dollars per truck, it's, it, it takes up the budget pretty quickly.
Yep, exactly. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of course. Anything else? All right, anything else, any running men? Perfect, then, I'll go ahead and make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Didn't I say aye?
I think so.
I heard an aye there.
I did that the other night, I thought I said aye, but I didn't.
Hey, so, so back there is my son, Ryan.
Hey, Ryan.